I don't care, thank you. My pen ran out of the counter. Good evening and welcome to the May 1st meeting of the Manhattan City Commission. If you would join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business this evening are proclamations. So, we actually have four. We have Poppy Day, National Travel and Tourism Week, Letter Carrier Food Drive Day, and Building Safety Month. So, the first one is Poppy Day and those citizens, if you would join me at this microphone down front, it would be Ellie Thayer, Poppy Princess, Susan Bergston, President, and Linda McClung, Historian, American Legion Auxiliary, will be, are present to receive the proclamation. So, I'm going to, if...
Can we lower the, can we take this over, lower it? Jesus, you're joking.
Oh. I need to read it first.
Okay, excuse me. Welcome, Susan. Thank you, ma'am. Glad to see you. Hi Ellie.
Welcome to the Manhattan City Commission. And this is the proclamation for Poppy Day. Whereas, America is the land of freedom, preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers. And whereas millions who have answered the call to arms have died on the, on the field of battle. And whereas a nation at peace must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war. And whereas the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars. And whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of its debt through the distribution of the Memorial Flower. Now therefore, I Linda Morse, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, do hereby proclaim May 5th as Poppy Day. And ask that all cities pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the Memorial Poppy on this day. So, let me present this. So, let me, so we'll have an official picture here. Ellie? Thank you. And Susan or Ellie, who's going to speak this evening?
Okay, alright. Ellie is our Poppy Princess and she is, what grade? First grade. She's one of the youngest ones we've had and she's really worked on her speech, so we're proud of her. So, she's going to tell you a little of her history and then she's going to pass poppies around to everybody. So, everybody can have a poppy.
I think we'll have to take this out. I don't think I'm good enough to unwind that. There you go.
You want me to hold this for you? Or you want to hold it?
I can.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Ellie Thayer. I am the daughter of Austin and Hannah Thayer of Manhattan. My grandfather, Robert Steiner, is in, an Army veteran. And grandfather, Austin Thayer, served in the Navy Army and retired from the Air Force. I am honored to be the 2018 Poppy Princess for the American Legion Post 17 Auxiliary as we pay tribute to all veterans. Let me tell you the history of the poppy. The wild poppy which grew on the battlefields of France and Flanders was the one touch of the beauty that survived the terrible Battle of the First World War. The poppy kept growing despite the bombing of the landscape on which it grew. And its bright red color was a sign of hope for those who survived. Soldiers of all nations began to regard the poppy as a living symbol of the sacrifices that were made by their fellow soldiers who served and died in all wars. Today, the poppy provides a way to honor the fallen soldiers by giving service to the living victims of the war. It gives honor to those who passed and provides help and hope to living veterans. Did you know that more than 25 million poppies are made by disabled veterans each year? Making poppies is a blessing to the veterans. It allows them to earn money and gives them something to do and something to think about. It helps them, it helps pass the time in a positive and meaningful way. There is no price to accept a poppy. However, all donations are gratefully accepted. The Memorial Poppies are distributed by American Legion Volunteers each Poppy Day and contributions received are focused entirely to rehab for veterans and assistance for their families. I would now like to pass out poppies tonight to honor all veterans. Thank you.
And I do want to tell you that all the poppies and all the donations we get does go back to the veterans because they make them, they're, they're paid so much for each poppy. So, it's, it's a good cause, it really is.
Thank you, Susan. And let me just say that the City Commission is prepared to reach, make a donation every year when you bring poppies. So, Ellie, if you'd like to take my money and then when you pass out the, the poppies, others up here will also donate as you, and then you can circulate through. We don't take contributions ordinarily at City Commission meetings, but today would be an exception, so thank you. The next proclamation is National Travel and Tourism Week. And would Neil Farmer, Ben Siegel, Dr. Kevin Roberts, and Karen Hibbard, but I think we have a, oh, thank you so much, yay. I think we have several, several people. So, Neil, hi. Yeah? And Ben, yeah, hi. Kevin Roberts, Karen Hibbard, and... Well, DeAngela. Sidney Baker, Marsha Rozell, Tony Ballard. Michael Goens. Thank you. All, all, Karen says all the staff from the Chamber of Commerce and the Convention and Visitors Bureau that focus on tourism. And so, the proclamation says, whereas leisure travel accounts for more than three-quarters of all trips taken in the United States and spurs countless benefits to travelers' health, wellness, creativity, cultural awareness, and education, happiness, productivity, and relationships. And whereas travel has a positive economic effect on Riley County and the state of Kansas' economic prosperity, and Manhattan Tourism generates 26.8 million in tax revenues with 16.7 million adding, adding to state and local governments. And whereas Manhattan represents 2.5% of all Kansas visitor spending. And whereas travel is among the largest private sector employer in the United States, the ninth-largest in Kansas, and supports 2,500 jobs in Manhattan. And whereas last year, 2017, Manhattan welcomed over 355,000 visitors, generating revenues for our local economy of 176 million. And where, dollars, and whereas Manhattan has earned the recognition as the number-one most walkable meeting destination in Kansas with our multiple meeting offerings. And in 2017, Visit Manhattan worked directly with 198 conferences, representing 15,306 room nights, 83,306 people, boosting an estimated economic impact of 64.35 million. And whereas, visitors enjoy Manhattan as a gateway to the Flint Hills. Experiencing the Flint Hills Discovery Center, Country Stampede, zip lining, hiking and biking trails, hunting, fishing, golf, water parks, Sunset Zoo, and the many offerings of Kansas State University, complete with the Big 12 sports. And whereas Manhattan represents unique and memorable dining offerings, complete with breweries, wineries, and scenic views. And whereas this year Manhattan will celebrate the big guy in City Park, known to us as Johnny Caw, creating a fun May 10th Tourism Celebration. Now therefore, I Linda Morse, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, do hereby proclaim May 6th through the 12th as National Travel and Tourism Week and urge the citizens of Manhattan to join me in this special observance with appropriate events and commemorations. Who would like this? Who would like to, okay, and please feel free to...
Well, Mayor and Commission, thank you very much for the recognition. It's a great place to live and an awesome place to visit. Bring all your friends.
And Mayor, in honor of National Tourism Week this year, we're celebrating, as you, as the proclamation said, the big guy in City Park, Johnny Caw. And so, Johnny Caw has his very own bobblehead. This year, he's turning, we're celebrating 52. As visitors might go by, they might see he's got a birthday hat in anticipation of his birthday party. So, these are available for sale. You can pick them up at the Chamber of Commerce Office, Office 501 points, $15. You get a bobblehead as well as you become a member of the Johnny Caw Club. All of that goes for the beautification of the Plaza that we are working on, again, to enhance tourism, to enhance the fun that can be had when you're in Manhattan, Kansas. Visit often.
I know that there's a, a good-sized committee that's been working on this project to raise funds, to make this a, a, just a delightful reason to come to City Park. And so, it's in keeping with our history that we recognize Johnny Caw. I'm looking forward to attending and I hope you will too. Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you very much. I was going to ask if we could zoom the camera in, but I doubt we can. Are, do we have any Zoom specialists? Okay, the next proclamation will be for Letter Carrier Food Drive Day. So, Patrick Snyder's, if you'd come up, hi. It's a start, yeah? It's the beginning. Patrick, thank you for coming this evening. On Saturday, whereas Saturday, May 12th, has been designated as Food Drive Day by the National Association of Letter Carriers and will be observed by letter carriers across the U.S. And whereas the letter carriers serve the citizens of our fine city in an unselfish, exemplary manner through the most hazardous weather, be it snow, rain, or extreme summer heat. And whereas letter carriers throughout the City of Manhattan will be collecting food to replenish the Flint Hills breadbasket for the less fortunate and homeless. And whereas the people of this great city wish to express their appreciation for and show recognition of the efforts and sacrifices made by their faithful letter carrier. Now therefore, I Linda Morse, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 12th, as Letter Carrier Food Drive Day in Manhattan and urge all citizens to join in its observance. And Patrick, I can't tell you how happy I am that that was short. Please let me invite you to say a few words.
Well, this will be short as well. First of all, I'd like to publicly honor Fred Stork. He served in this role for 18 years and he finally retired and moved to Shawnee. So, he's not in town anymore, but I would like to go on record that he served the community for 18 years selflessly and he should be respected and honored and thanked for that. Secondly, I want to just say this is an opportunity for us as letter carriers to help us as a community care for our neighbors. And so, I just want to encourage the community of Manhattan to take this opportunity to be generous to those who could use your help and we will help get that to where it needs to go. So, thank you.
Let me just say that I'm, I'm happy to make the first contribution to kick off the letter carriers drive. Thank you. And so, the fourth proclamation is Building Safety Month. So, Darren Emery, Ryan Courtright, and Emily Koenig. Hi. Whereas Manhattan is committed to recognizing our growth and strength depend, our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our citizens both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster. And whereas our confidence in the structural integrity of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas our nation benefits economically and technologically from modern building codes, including safeguards, to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snow, storms, tornadoes, wild land fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month reminds the public about the critical role of our communities' largely unknown guardians of public safety who assure the safe, efficient, and livable buildings that are essential to keep America great. And whereas building codes saves lives, in quotes, the theme for Building Safety Month encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safety and resilient construction, fire prefer, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, mitigation, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building Safety Month encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure that the places where we live, learn, work, worship, and play are safe and recognizes that countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety and economic investment at home and in the community and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and properties. Now therefore, I Linda Morse, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, do hereby proclaim May 2018 as Building Safety Month in Manhattan and encourage our citizens to join in participating in Building Safety Month activities. I made it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I would like to say I did my best to edit that down, but it still turned out to be a rather lengthy proclamation. So, much of what we do as code officials really is behind the scenes and flies below the radar. So, I really appreciate this opportunity to, to highlight the significance and the importance of code enforcement and building inspections. And I just wanted to point out that we're really just a very small part of a large team that has to come together whenever a structure is being built. From the developer to the contractor, the tradespeople that work hard to get structures built safely, it's a large team and we have to work together. And there's a, a key role that's played at the very beginning of most projects, especially commercial and more elaborate projects, and that's the role of the design professional, architects and engineers. And I believe Ryan wanted to say a word or two about the, what I think is a great working relationship we have with the local design professionals.
So, I would just add that a safe building begins with a safe building design. The, I believe as, as co-professionals and design professionals, we share that responsibility together. We're very fortunate here in Manhattan that our staff have a good working relationship with our local design professionals, which allows us to successfully reduce the fire and life safety risks within the built environment in our community. So, with that, I'd, I'd like to extend my appreciation for recognizing Building Safety Month, supporting our mission, what that means, what building safety means for our community. I'd like to thank Emily for being here with us to accept this proclamation. And if she has some words to say, I'll encourage her.
I'll be very short. Emily Koenig, I'm representing the American Institute of Architects of Flint Hills in Kansas. And thank you to the Commission for recognizing Building Safety Month and to the officials that we work with, both in the Building Official Office and in the planning. Again, the team is large and complex and we are honored to work together very closely and to have the diligence that we do in this community to reasonable and accurate review. So, we're excited for this opportunity. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, maybe my voice won't crack here, is to ask if there are any comments from the public not related to an item on the agenda. If there, if you're, if you'd like to come forward to the podium and give us your name. Seeing no one, I will close the public comments section and ask if there are any comments from commissioners.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly call attention to, at the Flint Hills Discovery Center this Saturday, they're opening the Be the Dinosaur exhibit. They've always had a lot of success at the Discovery Center with their dinosaur exhibitions, but I think this one's going to be kind of unique because it takes some virtual technology and allows, you know, the kiddos to act like through this technology that they're an actual dinosaur. So, they get to see what it's like to eat and sleep and live like a dinosaur. So, I think it will be something really nice to take the family to this weekend. So, just wanted to call attention to that.
I think it's next week, okay?
Next week? Okay, I lie. I lie, May 12th.
Still go to the Discovery Center.
Still go.
It's okay to go twice.
Everything just runs into each other nowadays. Sorry.
I did want to point out, the Flint Hills Regional Council is having a conference on May 18th. That would be a great time for all of you that are not aware of what the Flint Hills Regional Council does in our community to go to and listen to Fort Riley and some of our other local counties and how they participate, our local communities, and what kind of partnerships we have that's happening here in Manhattan. So, if you want to take advantage of that for May 18th. Before our next meeting, K-State's going to have several of their graduations. So, we want to say congratulations to all the K-Staters that are going to be graduating. It's going to be a busy weekend. That's the same weekend, of course, as we were pointing about the Flint Hills Discovery Center and I think even Mother's Day is that weekend. There is a free, mothers are free to go to, at no cost, to the Sunset Zoo. So, that's the things going on in the next couple of weeks. Please take advantage of everything. School's going to end before you know it. There are a lot of programs offered by the city, whether it's for the pools or whether it's at our parks and rec, several of the hands-on parks and rec programs, Sunset Zoo, Discovery Center. Go ahead and apply online and register. Seats are going to get filled rather quickly, so take advantage of it so you have, you know where your kids are going to be this summer. Okay, I'd like to just mention that May is Bike Month and Manhattan has a lot more details on the city's website. So, just type in Bike Month and you will see a whole host of activities. There's a, I think that's May 19th. I won't do that one. I think that's pretty much all. Alright. With that, the next item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. The items on the Consent Agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature or those items which have previously been reviewed by the City Commission. A Commissioner may request an item be moved to the end of the General Agenda. Does the Commission have any questions or comments on any of the Consent Agenda items? Okay. Are there public comments on any of the Consent Agenda items? Seeing no one. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I move we approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would the City Clerk call the roll?
Mayor Morse.
Yes.
Commissioner Dodson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ready.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner McKee.
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero.
Thank you. And so, then that went pretty fast. The, compared to the proclamation. The next item on the agenda is the General Agenda. And our, our task is to consider the first reading of an ordinance rezoning an approximate 19-acre area from multiple-family residential district with multi-family redevelopment overlay district and university overlay district to urban core residential district. And it says here that, I have the wrong person. So, Adam, about what, your first name?
John.
John Adam, yes. And he is going to make the city's, city staff's presentation.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the City Commission, I'm John Adam, Senior Planner, Long Range. And yes, we are here tonight to talk about the rezoning of an area along North Manhattan Avenue to Urban Core Residential. This is a map showing the subject area's location within the context of the city. And this is a closer view showing the neighborhood context, built environment around it, and then the present zoning of the subject area and its surroundings. To the west, of course, is the campus of Kansas State University. Most of the area around it, everything butting it, in fact, other than that, is a high-density residential with an M-Pro overlay. The UCR District had its origins in the latest comprehensive plan update. It is specifically called out, intended to provide university-oriented student housing in the core area neighborhoods where neighborhood services and amenities are in close proximity. The district regulations were adopted last year. We were all prepared to go ahead with rezoning immediately thereafter, but staff put a little pause on that. We wanted to analyze the impacts of development, what the impacts could be on utilities. After reviewing that, receiving a green light from Public Works, we started up this rezoning process again. So, the regulations are in place and have been for about a year now. We're here tonight, you were here tonight, to consider the question of whether the rezoning should actually happen now. The staff report covers the findings in great detail, so let me just summarize some of the key points. As I mentioned, infrastructure-wise, the area can handle the additional demands of even a robust build-out. And that's what we're aiming for. The intent of the city in creating this district is really to effect such a change in order to create greater housing opportunities close to campus and services. The history of the zoning in the area right now shows that the permitted 43 units per acre is not enough incentive to drive a strong redevelopment market. We're hoping that that, this can change that. With UCR in place, the mixed single-family, multiple-family nature of the area will eventually be replaced by larger mid-rise development. To avoid a hodgepodge of density, quality, and massing, the new district requires a minimum density and has design controls to create a visual and spatial appeal, especially at the pedestrian level. This area is ideal to accommodate the kind of housing market that has had great interest and success in the Midwest in the past several years. To capture some of the apartment growth that has been taking place more on the edges of the city and to bring it inside where shopping, schools, and entertainment are more, are located, where the infrastructure is already in place and waiting to be used more efficiently. And although the rental market may be soft right now, with NBAF coming on in a few years, coming online in a few years, it would be preferable to get ahead of that demand instead of having to scramble to catch up once that's in place. At the Planning Board hearing, there was some testimony saying that there are too many unknowns about this district. Fear that some lots won't develop right away, or the area's too big, the area's too small. In short, the message was, we don't know all the repercussions, so let's stop and let's figure them out before we go ahead with this rezoning, before we act. We don't know. We don't know if this will take off like gangbusters or if it'll lie fallow for a number of years. If this were a completely new... If this were a completely new and unknown zoning tool, it would be wise to proceed tentatively. But this type of development has enjoyed quite a great amount of success in college towns in the Midwest, places like Fayetteville, Ames, and Columbia. As Planning Board member John Ball pointed out during the board's hearing on this item, the idea for this district came from the community, not from staff, meaning that the idea was already in the air, an idea that the community felt should be tried out in Manhattan. So, yes, there are unknowns. We can't predict or guarantee if and when somebody's lot will be purchased to include in a development proposal, but that's not the city's job in this matter. Instead, the task before you tonight is to balance the numerous factors, including knowing that some lots may not develop right away. They may take several years. This is a long-range tool. Development might take place over a 20-year period, but eventually it should take place. The proposed rezoning will have a positive impact on the community by making available a new by-right zoning district or a new by-right development product that was achievable up until now only through a planned unit development process. It has the potential to transform the area into a populous and vibrant, a more populous and vibrant place, using existing infrastructure more efficiently and reducing sprawl. And so, for those reasons, the planning board and city administration recommend approval of the proposed rezoning of 19 acres from R3 to UCR, Urban Core Residential. Here is a possible motion for you to consider, and I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
I have one quick question. When I was reading through the planning board minutes, there was this concern brought up about orphan lots. And looking at the, where we're rezoning, I really didn't understand where those orphan lots would be. So, when they say that their concerns about orphan lots has to do with what we're doing with zoning or how things are going to develop likely over time?
This is the unknown about how development might happen and how land assemblage might happen. In particular, I think some of the, the person making the claim about orphan lots or speculating about orphan lots was concerned that if there's a new development or relatively new development of apartment buildings next door to him, and he's on a 7,500-square-foot lot, he's prevented from developing under the UCR because there's a minimum development size of 15,000 square feet. The reason for that was that you cannot achieve the minimum density on a single family, on a single 7,500-square-foot lot. It'd be difficult, we ran some scenarios, we did some layouts, it would be difficult to do that on even a 15,000-square-foot lot. You start enjoying some efficiencies of land use when you have larger and larger pieces. You can actually achieve these densities. So, his concern that he voiced was that there's an apartment building that's only six years old next door to me, a 12plex, and no one's going to be buying that and tearing it down and including mine, so I'm going to get skipped over. I'm at the end here. I can't be assembled. He may or may not be correct, and I don't know.
Okay. That's, thank you.
Yeah, I have just a couple of questions. I'm sorry. Unless you have questions of John?
I was giving it.
Yeah. And how many orphan lots are there?
Well, that'd be purely speculative. I mean, we'd have to look and see and analyze. I mean, there's 65 lots, there's 33 property owners of those 65. So, there's a few that, they might be orphaned for a number of years, or they might be left out. No one might pick them up, but then if this really takes off, or once it does, somebody will look at that apartment building and say, I can do at least 58 units per acre, go up to about 100 or so, yeah, that's worthwhile to buy that and assemble it and put it in with this whole package. So, it's...
No, I understand the justification. I just wondered how many we might be creating.
Yeah, that would be purely speculative on our part.
My question was about the parking. So, how does that impact? Where you said, instead of going out, we're going to be going up. So, if that means more living space and more cars, was it their designation? Because it mentioned about, a lot about off-street parking. So, how would all of that be zoned over there if it is going to high-density?
In order to, and this has to go back to Commissioner McKee's question, or when I was answering his about the efficiencies of larger lots, if you can achieve, or if you can assemble a half a block, you could be doing a development that weren't doing structured parking, so multiple-level parking that's tucked in behind the buildings and accessible off of the alley. So, we're probably looking at, in most cases, there's going to be one or two decks, in some cases, three decks of parking. And the design requirements say that those either have to be tucked behind buildings or they have to be screened if they're visible from a public area, public right-of-way, other than an alley. So, they do have to accommodate parking on-site, yes.
Okay. Seeing no other commissioner comments. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Are there public comments? Has the public had an opportunity to review the proposal? And if you have comments, now's the time. Seeing no one, come forward. I'll close the public comments section and open the floor for commissioner comments or concerns.
I'm not used to this. We haven't adapted, so it's all new to me. I'm just used to jumping right in and speaking away. I think, you know, this is one of the reasons we also looked at the parking garage in Aggieville. We're trying to accommodate a lot of things for the high-density area where people can use their cars less frequently and walk and ride their bikes, and the parking garage that's there would be utilized mainly for businesses. But a lot of millennials and young professionals are looking to be more economical and more green, let's say, and have more things to walk and ride their bikes to, or other ways to get there, being close to grocery stores or entertainment and restaurants. I think because the community and everybody else decided this a couple of years ago, this is probably the right way to go. My main concern is about the parking. I don't, I know, you know, he said it goes behind, I'm just not sure about how that looks in that area. When we talked about a parking garage, we talked about it for Aggieville. So, I don't, I guess I haven't quite wrapped my head around, how does the density impact the parking in that area? Because that's still not, it doesn't seem it's adequate right now. I don't know how it's going to be put to the back and in the alleys and how that's going to be accommodated, but there must be a plan, I'm hoping, somewhere. I am concerned about the orphan lots, but I think that's, we'll see how that goes in the future. I do like the fact that the existing properties would be legally conforming, so it wouldn't impact them, they wouldn't have to modify anything at this point. So, I, for me, this seems reasonable to approve on first reading.
Similar, I think this is the right direction to go, especially since this was something that was a part of the comprehensive plan already. Increasing density in the Aggieville and, in my opinion, downtown is a no-brainer. The only note that I'd want to give to this, and it's kind of beyond the rezoning, is I want to see how the market reacts after we rezone this, but if we don't start seeing the kind of development that we would want to see in this area, I hope the commission and the city would be willing to explore additional incentives or ways that we could work with developers to try to encourage that kind of development, because I think overall it has a lot of positives for our city and trying to push density that way and preserving some of our traditional neighborhoods. So, I'm in support of this.
Just real briefly, when you look at what it's going to look like down Blumente Avenue, we've got Blumente Hotel, we've got a new Hotel Marriott on the other side of the street near the intersection of 12th, some of the interior design that we have for Aggieville, and then the addition of this up North Manhattan Avenue, this will be an extraordinary plus for the city. And as for parking, you know, if we look at the Blumente Hotel or we look at the new apartments that are down just east of 12th Avenue on the north side of the street, they've got parking where you are either in the back or you can enter through a gateway. So, I think all that's possible. It's just that, as all of us know, when you're using land for parking, it's land that you can't use for occupants. So, it is, it's more economically challenging for any developer, but it's completely doable in most cities, and I think it is here. So, I think this is a great idea, and I think as Commissioner McKee said, we'll just have to see how fast this develops and then see what we might have to do to encourage that kind of a development later on.
When? Do you? I want, I plan to support this. It seems to me that when we developed the comprehensive plan four or five years ago, we set this in motion, and we've been steadily just chipping away at what's the appropriate process, how do we get there? And tonight is probably the final stroke with the rezoning, so that a builder could come in or a developer and proceed to come, to work with the community development staff to make this what we envision. And it is a leap. I remember when we passed the Colbert Hills Master Plan years ago, and it was a 20-year build-out, and we are now at 20 years, and it's not quite built out yet. But it is filling in and continues to fill in. So, I think that this process that we're setting in motion will cause that to fill in, and we will see, you know, what we're, what this plan is all about. I, you know, I have some concern about parking. I don't think that some of the big complexes that we see where you can't drive down the middle of the street is exactly what we had in mind. We wanted the parking to be in the parking lot, not on the street. And I'd like to, and maybe that's just our enforcement, but I'd like to, maybe we need to take another measure or two, but the example that we would see is the white seven-story, I think, apartment building behind the Blumente Hotel, and that, as you would think, would continue on up to Rotone on North Manhattan Avenue on the east side and be one block deep at this point and two blocks on one stretch, one-block area. So, and, and as we try to build density, I just think we have to have faith that we have, you know, that we're, we're going about this in the right way, and I do. So, I'm ready to begin the journey, and I plan to support it. Is there a motion? Are you ready for a motion?
Consider, I move that we consider first reading of an ordinance rezoning in an approximate 19-acre, five-block area from M, R3, M-FRO, U-O, multiple-family residential district with the multifamily redevelopment overlay district and the university overlay district to UCR, Urban Core Residential District.
Sir, second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. City clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Dodson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ready.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner McKee.
Yes.
And Mayor Morris.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
The next item B is to consider a resolution number 050118-B, Setting Meeting Procedures and Public Comment Guidelines. The presenter is Kyle Mangus, Assistant City Manager.
This is a follow-up from our last discussion. I'll be brief and just kind of cover some of the changes we've kind of, kind of run through on the meeting and public comment policy. It's been kind of a living document. For, more for the public, I just kind of wanted to run through that first slide again on why, why adopt a public meeting policy. Really, the policy, you know, at the end of the day, benefits the public. You know, these meetings we have, our, our main goal is to conduct business. We don't want citizens to have to wait several hours to speak on their item, if necessary. We also have these meetings to hear from commissioners regarding city business, and then, and then preserving and respecting those First Amendment rights are just some of the items. So, just kind of wanted to reiterate that. And again, with this slide, some other benefits, rules of order, compliance with COMA, you know, there's a lot of laws, public hearing laws and First Amendment laws, and then it's just a best practice, as we found, as we've researched other cities and municipalities. So, we talked about this a little bit last time, so if we don't have public hearings, public, how do you do public engagement? Well, public engagement can take on a lot of different forms. I think what we learned last time and what we talked about is that we can continue to further engage and create public engagement outside of City Hall and do a better job of that via, whether that's social media, our mobile apps, the website, whether it's direct engagement with commissioners, which many of you receive now, whether it's in-person, by mail, or telephone, but even taking that a step further and allowing the public to provide comment, whether we create a forum where they can provide comment that could be included in the public packet. So, it could go out and they could, and that could be published. If they couldn't make the meeting, they could then provide their comments in that style as well. And also, some things that we, that I know that have occurred here before and we can continue to look at if certain issues pop up that are contentious, maybe look at a town hall-style meeting or a roundtable or a focus group to try and bring those constituents together who have those concerns and want to bring those up in a more structured conversation. So, some of the things that we didn't change in the resolution from prior is most of the public comment decorum items, you know, one speaker at a time, address the whole commission versus individual members, no profane language, keep comments on topic. One of the things we've tried to steer away from is debate, so we don't have either audience members debating with the person at the podium or the person at the podium trying to engage outside people, and then re-engagement at the podiums after public comment is closed. Some of the changes, based on our feedback from last time, I'll just kind of run through some of these real quick. It seemed like there was a desire, consensus last time, about speaker timeframes, but no overall limits on that open public comment time, and it would occur still at the first legislative meeting like tonight. The adjournment times, we had proposed some times before, we pushed those back. You saw some updates in the packet to that, so from 10:30 to midnight and 7:30 to 10:30 for legislative meetings and work sessions. There was also some clarification based off of some feedback.
Kyle?
Yeah.
A second. In our packet, it says for work session, 9:30, so, and that one says 10:30. So, is it 10:30 or is it 9:30?
It's 10:30. So, in our briefing, kind of talked about it. We provided new printouts for you. When we were tracking changes, some wires just got crossed, but it's 10:30 in here, and it's in the memo, it says 10:30 as well, just in our, in our draft resolution, so. So, the other clarification was really about, some of the commissioners, you guys had questions about asking questions of those at the podium versus having a debate. We tried to clarify that. Really, commissioners could ask questions and clarifications, you know, it's not like the commissioners just have to sit there and stonewall the whole time. They, you know, they can also ask, you know, city management or staff to follow up at a later time. There was also discussion about signing up before the meetings with the clerk or not, whether people should be able to just show up during the meeting and speak. So, we spoke to that a little bit in the resolution, that if you don't sign up but you still wish to speak, you can do so. Really, if you sign up beforehand, we're going to have the clerk call those in order, and then if there's anyone else that's here, they would get, you know, the ability to come up after that and sign up at the podium. We did talk about, okay, if we have a sort where we have a public comment timeframe where we see there's 20 people in the audience, and we know we have four agenda items we have to get through that night, so you do the math, that's a couple hours right there if we limit to five minutes. So, if the mayor, majority of commissioners feel that, okay, two, three minutes is going to be more appropriate, or two minutes, they have the ability to do so in the resolution if there's more than 10 people. if there's more than 10 people signed up to speak, really give some discretion there. We also clarified about reading things at the podium so that speakers don't come up and just read verbatim. They can submit those to the clerk to distribute. And we did clarify in there, there was some concern from the commission about a person, say, for example, representing an HOA group that wanted to come up and, and read the statement of that group. That, that could still be allowed because they're representing that group and they're just trying to cross that word of, of who they represent. So we did have some stuff about electronic presentations. We had some concerns from our IT staff about when, you know, just anybody plugging in and putting stuff into the computer. So just making sure we get those just the day before so we can make sure they're in the right format, they're going to work, and there's not any virus issues, security issues with that. Really, that's the only changes from last meeting, so I'd leave any questions now from Commissioners.
Commissioners, questions? I just have a couple, things I'd like to raise, and I, there are more questions at this point, but I'm wondering in, if, and maybe Katie, who probably have better sense too on some of these, about whether we may need to mention a quorum, that a Commission, a quorum of four Commissioners is necessary to conduct business? Is that something that we need?
We can add that to it if we want. I think we have it established in our ordinance. It's established in our city ordinance.
Okay. What is the name of that ordinance?
I can pull it up. I think it's in the Administration, Chapter, Chapter One.
Okay.
But I can pull it up for sure.
I was just curious if it overlaps in any way with what we're talking about this evening. Okay. But I wondered about a quorum because we talk about discussions and city business. And I agree, we've been through this. So these are follow-up questions that I didn't have first time through, and you've rewritten some of it. As we have looked through the legislate, as I look through the legislative meetings, I see that, I don't see a place for a consultant or a developer or someone that is an expert or would have, perhaps architect, engineer, that kind of thing, that would have developed the proposal. It goes from, from the staff making the presentation, and then it jumps typically to, and this would be more the general agenda, it jumps to questions regarding the presentation and then public comment. So I'm thinking that we need another line in there. I don't think it's adequate. There's one line that says, the first item is "presentation colon, city staff presents and/or introduces the item." And I don't think that's sufficient to include the consultant developer.
So I believe, Mayor, the, the line below that is where, is that addressing, can you read the line below that?
The next line says, "Questions regarding presentation. The city commission asks questions regarding the presentation." So in my view, you as the city staff, like you did tonight, you introduced the, the item, but then there's, there needs to be room for another party.
Yeah.
That's typically a part of any developer-driven proposal.
And, and Katie, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the, those, that paragraph about, so where did a tornado warning? Yeah, our alerted system will kick on when we have our tornado warning, so.
Oh. Is it on a warning or a?
Northwestern Riley County.
Oh, northwest.
We'll keep an eye out on it.
It's not Manhattan.
It's north, anywhere in Riley County, our alerted system goes off.
We're in the southeast.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Mayor, sorry, the, those are meant to be general guidelines of process. We could, we could change the wording of it, but I think those are not, the paragraph above that, I believe it talks about being general guidelines for the process as far as it's not steadfast, the city Speaker presents first, et cetera, et cetera. We just tried to lay out how, how we currently do it.
Well, under public hearings required by law, you, you did it as I am descri, I am saying it should be. So the city staff makes the presentation, and the next item says applicant slash affected party presentation. The applicant and/or the affected party has an opportunity to present relevant evidence. Then I open it for public comment. I'm saying that for general agenda items, we need that as a, an option. We don't always have an expert here, but a consultant, but.
It's in there under the present, or it's intended to be under the presentation section where it says city staff presents and/or introduces the item. If, if there were consultants or whatever involved, that would be part of the city's presentation for the general agenda items.
So I, I think it would help to add clarifying language. I mean, we've had examples where the, the chamber's making an economic development presentation, the president of the university, we just introduced the president.
Right.
And it doesn't, so I, I think we can add clarifying language that allows broader definition to that, because I can see where the way city staff presents and/or introduces the item, so.
Anyway.
Such as other expert presentation or other aspects.
Let me just ask a question so I can clarify the language. When we have the non-city individuals present, they're listed as presenters on the item most of the time.
Right.
So it would include, we could say, including all listed presenters, because we do allow non-city employees to present, but they're usually listed on the item themselves. So that's intended to address your concern, but we could add some language.
I'd just like to see it like you do, you did it on public hearings. It's on page three. It's a separate bullet by itself, and it, it, it makes it very clear, not subject to anybody's interpretation. I'd just like to see that on general agenda items also.
The problem is, the public hearing has a specific applicant or affected party. There's a specific party.
Mm-hmm.
That's not true in a general agenda item necessarily.
Not all of them.
Right. And so you, it would be very hard in some of those to discern who that party is.
It has to be, you could say, if applicable or something. Anyway.
I, we could, I think we're, we're concerned about the people who are presenters, who might be non-city presenters that are part of the item.
Right.
So we can, I'd clarify it that way rather than call them an applicant or affected party, or you're going to have other people claim they can give a presentation as an affected party.
I just want a bullet with whatever you call them. They don't have to be.
Okay.
To me, that's important in, in, if we're adopting a, if we're going to be as formal as we are throughout this document, then I think this is, warrants our diligence also. And I wondered on page five, toward the bottom, it's item E, and it says, "Rules of decorum applicable to all public comment." And item E says, "The speaker's comments should relate to city business, open public comment, to, to the public hearing, or to the agenda item of business." And as, when we're in public comment mode, ordinarily, at public comment, it's the mayor's role to say that we don't want the public to address items that are on our agenda. We want the public comment not to include. So it seems to me the language here ought to be tinkered with to exclude.
Well, it's that, so when we remove the public hearing specific rules, that section applies to the three different categories of public comment.
Well, this is public comment.
Yes, yes. It applies to the three separate categories of public comment. So this whole D applies whether the public comment is arising in open public comment or a general agenda or a public hearing. And so I could add like as applicable, but the point is that when, whatever time that public comment arises, that the comment has to be germane to that, so that you don't have someone standing up and talking about.
I know.
The sales at the retail store on your public hearing.
Yeah.
So since those rules apply to all three contexts, that's why all three contexts are listed there.
Well, the public comments are the ones at the beginning of the meeting.
The open, but this, this new section D, when it says public comment, it's applying to public comment in any three of those circumstances.
Situation.
Yes. The prior draft had a different.
Yeah.
Policy, but this one doesn't have that because we, we decided that the rules should be the same.
Okay.
For open public comment or general agenda or public hearing.
Okay.
So now this whole section, these rules apply in any of those three circumstances. They're not different because the rules are now the same for all three.
So what about the public comment? We're saying they're all the same. Okay.
Yes.
Then I'll let that go. Okay. And at the top of page six, the last sentence in item three, "Response to public comment" is the title for the paragraph. And then the last sentence is just a standout, or one-off. It says, "The purpose of public comment at a business meeting is for the city commission to receive the input. Generally, neither the city commission nor city staff will respond to questions or issues raised during open public comment or agenda item of business comment." And then it just provided that. "The city commission may ask questions of the speaker, decide to address the issue at a future meeting, or refer to the matter to the city commission." And so that's, you're comfortable with that? Provided that, it sounds more legal than practical for a policy.
Sure. I think, I, that was in response to the commission's desire that if they wanted to ask a question, you wanted to have that opportunity. We wanted to make sure that we weren't preventing you from saying to Ron or.
Okay.
To look into, we want to give you that flexibility to direct.
Uh-huh. Okay.
If that's what you'd like to do.
All right. Okay, thank you. Okay. Those were the questions I had. Do other Commissioners have? That would be a good point, but you have no more questions at this point. I've been asking questions, so, okay, good. All right. Thank you, Kyle. Are there public comments regarding this item? Does anyone have a? Would you state your name and address?
Yes. My name is Michael Walter.
Okay.
I'm at 2921 Arbor Drive. I'm a former member of, former president of the Homeowners Association for Warner Park, Arbor Heights. So my comments tonight are reminiscent of the times past when I spoke much longer than five minutes and belabored much, and so I understand the streamlining that this may give to your meetings. I'll offer two comments. One is, we need to interface with the community, and we certainly would not want what you decide here tonight to compromise that interface with the community. The other is that homeowners associations represent large groups of people. I would therefore recommend that some consideration be given in the procedures that would allow individuals who are representing organizations, not necessarily homeowners associations, to speak longer than five minutes. This endeavors to those many issues that they may be able to consolidate amongst the many members of their group. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Are there other public comments? Hi.
Richard Hill, 3513 State Code Circle, representing landlord of Manhattan, Kansas. First, let me say that in the comments preceding this, we talked about all other cities have gone to three to five minutes, including Overland Park and Olathe. I speak at Overland Park's meetings on a continual basis, and quite often at Olathe. I have never been, never been cut off. And I'm certain you know that I'm going to speak more than five minutes. I think that the aspect of saying that the law does not give the public the right to speak, and yet there are more laws that give the right of public hearing and the rights of speech in, in meetings than, than there are the other way around. And the law precisely does not say that an individual does not have the right to speak. In those particular cases, it just does not address it. My concern also, and the concern of the landlords, is the five-minute aspect. There are times that five minutes is adequate to do it, but there are times that we have had that we are addressing our livelihood, and you are wanting to regulate and control our livelihood. To say that five minutes for, for my livelihood is, is totally ludicrous, you know. I do not tend to appear before you unless there are items that affect my livelihood or stuff. That's why you haven't seen me in quite some time. Thank you for that. But I do feel that the five-minute aspect should not be a situation that we are, we are dealing with and is violation of my, my First Amendment right. My First Amendment right is to, is to speak up and be heard in these aspects, and the laws do upon public hearing state that. So I think that, that is there, but as a practical matter, I just do not think five minutes on certain things is adequate. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Are there other public comments, please? Okay. At this point, the public comment period is closed. So is there further discussion or comments from the commission?
Yeah, I'm thinking, thinking about, you know, those nights when we had, you know, real long sessions that went past midnight, and some of that was, was, was caused by, you know, people repeating, but the, the idea here of homeowners association or landlords association, can't that be part of the staff presentation? Like, like in other words, if we know we've got some issue where, where we're a group in town, say you're going to pass a, you know, an ordinance on licensing businesses, okay, and, and, and a business group wants to, wants to speak, can't that be put in as part of the presentation as opposed to public comment so that they could talk for 10, 15, 20 minutes if it was relevant? That's doable in this policy, right?
That would be up to the staff member to allow.
Yep.
Who they want to present and.
So, so what I'm thinking, in my mind, maybe I'm reading too much into it. I see that flexibility there. Like, if we're, we're going to do some big thing that's going to affect three homeowners associations, we, we do enough outreach. You had this section in here about public engagement, you know, online comments, and generally we know that there's a group that really wants to present something. We could allow them the opportunity to do so, they become part of the agenda, they do the presentation. And then the public comment is for other folks out there that are not engaged that way. So I, you know, I understand the concern there, but I think we've got a mechanism for making that happen, if I'm correct in my interpretation. That make sense?
I think that, I guess I'll let Kyle speak to it, but your interpretation is correct. The city could add non-city presenters to each item, but I don't know how often, if Kyle has any issues with that.
Traditionally, we have not. I think we, we could, I'm trying to think of some of the issues surrounding that. I think it would, some of it would really depend on the communication that occurs between that staff member and that group, and the ability to get that information to go into the packet, I guess, could be some of it.
But there's multiple, I, I guess my concern is there's multiple interest groups on every single issue. And so then, who, who are the interest groups that get to speak? What defines an organization or group? I just, I feel like that would just turn into us not having any public comment rules again. So if that's the route we want to go, we might, I mean, if you think about the, the more contentious issues that we talk about. So if that's the route we want to go, we might, I mean, if you think about the, the more contentious issues that we talk about, there are multiple interest groups represented in the room every time we talk about those things. So that then all of those organizations get twenty minutes to do a report?
I, I, I don't think we would, we, we haven't gone that way in the past. And I'm not sure why we would in the future, Commissioner, I guess. I, I think that traditionally, when something occurs with that agenda item, staff's going to present it. And then those impacted parties will get their chance to speak. We just, we just never have had, I'm trying to think back to even the rental when we had our focus group. I mean, we had some of those people that were part of that focus group. They came up and spoke. So, I mean, they, whether they were part of the packet or not.
So generally, we, we've, and that's a good example of where we tried to present, based on those interactions, we've tried to present things that were agreed on by the variety of the folks present, but things that were, there were still non-agreement on. But generally, the presentation, whether of a staff or whoever, is a recommendation for action. And that that group who is presenting is proposing approval of that proposal. So it would be difficult to, you know, if, if everybody was in harmony, I think that works good. You know, that's a, it's a group presentation where everybody's in favor of what's being proposed. If there was objections to it, I think that would, as Commissioner McKee said, you think you had everybody involved that was affected by it, but you may have a new organization that pops in. So I think that would be difficult to control from a presenter standpoint. And then you, you do have situations where staff introduces an item and it's rare, but it's neutral. It's a very political issue and the staff may not have a recommendation. And you may have very diverging viewpoints on a particular situation.
Yeah, my thought was just that, you know, if there, if somebody's engaged in this, like a homeowners association with the staff well in advance and it's planned, and, and you plan the agenda with the mayor. So as a matter of exception, you could put it on there if you deemed it necessary. That's all I'm saying. So, so I think that flexibility's in there. And I'm not saying we can create a free-for-all, you know, where, where we have ten groups, each get to present for twenty minutes and invalidate the policy. But, but I think the concern there was just certain things have come up where, you know, it makes sense to have one person maybe represent the landlords and say, okay, we want to do this presentation. And of course, it would have to be, you know, provided well in advance and coordinated. And that would, that would focus. And that's what the whole purpose of this is, is to, is to focus the discussion on the key things. And then that's all I'm saying. I, I, I'm not advocating we change anything in the way the policy is written. But I think that flexibility's there should it become necessary to do so.
I just, yeah.
In the past, you know, we've had things, particularly those of significant importance, have come to us, let's say, from the planning board. And those kinds of presentations have comments from citizens who have voiced concern about that particular item. And then if we reach out and, and reach out to homeowners and so on in neighborhoods when we do the town halls, I think you've been pretty good about representing some of the things that they're concerned about. So it's not that the issues aren't known beforehand. In most cases, they are. So, I mean, overall, what we're trying to do here is achieve some equity. Making sure that every citizen has the ability to speak before the body and to speak in a way that they're not intimidated. You know, that it's as easy as we can possibly make it. Everybody gets a fair chance to have a dialogue. So that balances, I think, when you first brought this to us, it's a balance between that and getting the business of the city done. And I think this thing fairly represents that.
I, you know, I think from the past experience, when this was first presented, it was much more constrained. There were a lot more, it wasn't as open. There was more limitations. And I think we've made it as open as we can. And five minutes, you can still, we, we might need to make it three if there's a whole lot of people here. And we made it such that if you come in in the middle, you can still have an opportunity to speak, sign in. The other aspect of this is, all five of us get a lot of emails and phone calls and letters. So plenty of people, when there's, if you take the garage for the Marriott that came up, plenty of people contacted us via email. We had lots of meetings with other constituents. So that is still open. Most of these items that are contentious or controversial, or there's a difference of, of opinion, we are easily accessible. So that's another format. Sometimes, you know, I've, I've had sit-down meetings for two or three hours with some people on a certain issue. So I think we try to be flexible in that way if there's a longer discussion to have. And those items that might take longer can also be put in our mail folders. Those documents, if it's a longer piece of information that we need to know of, it can easily be emailed, and that's been done in the past as well. All of the bullet points that were, that you posted up there were changes to the original one and trying to stay within that midnight hour. And because we've made some decisions that, you know, we're, at least I wasn't quite sure if, if that was the right decision when it's at one or two in the morning. So we're trying to avoid that as well as the public. So we're all aware of what we're doing at the same time, coherent in our decision-making. And I think the presentations or anything else, if somebody wants to present, if they give it on Monday, we can still see it on our Tuesday night. I think that's being very fair. And we came to this discussion after a lengthy, lengthy discussion amongst ourselves a few nights, a few weeks ago. There's a lot of organizations or government agencies that have public comment at the end of the meeting or don't have it at all. May even limit it even more restrictive than what we have it to just three or four people speak or one, one person speak on the opposing side and one on the affirmative side. So we've tried to make it as open and transparent. We're trying to be more clear about the meetings we're having ahead of time so people can have more heads up on what we're going to be talking about. I'm very comfortable with the changes that have been made. I think it keeps it, I think we need to try it for a year or two and see how it works out. If somebody does want to present, let's say, another organization, and they have a difference of opinion for what the staff is going to be presenting, that needs to be in our packet on Thursday or Friday. So the public is privy to see that information. If that's a case that somebody else would like to be a part of. Instead of giving that information on Tuesday, because it's not fair to the public if we're doing a public comment. So if somebody has a lengthy presentation, they're more than welcome to do it, but just put it in the mail folder so we are aware of what we're going to be discussing. I think we go out of our way as far as having community forums, having all stakeholders at the table. We spend lots of time, our staff spends lots of time making phone calls to people that might be thinking differently than us. We made sure that our, the way we survey people is very regional. So we're getting input from all demographics. There's more room for improvement, but I think we need to give what we have right now a shot. We don't have anything right now. We need to see how this works and tweak it as we go. So I think, I'm comfortable with the format that we laid out after all the changes we've made to it.
I would agree that I like this proposal a lot more than I did the first one. And just one thing that I wanted to point out reading in the packet is there, there, there's a couple sentences. "The purpose of a city commission legislative meeting or work session is for the city commission to conduct business. If the commission allows public input at its, at its business meetings, then the purpose for the commission is to receive information from the public." So in my mind, for me to be able to conduct a business is imperative that I receive information from the public. And the fact that we're not a full-time commission, if we were to restrict more, from the original proposal, if we were to restrict public comment, I mean, I have a lunch meeting every single day. I'm on the phone or in a meeting till eight o'clock. I just want to hear everybody. And so it's imperative for me to, for people to feel like this is an open place where they're going to come and speak. And if thirty people come and show up and they want to speak on one issue, all of those thirty people should be able to speak on that issue. So I'm really happy that that's reflected in this. I, I think it's reasonable to limit the amount of time that one individual can speak. I don't think that that's far-reaching or overreaching, but I definitely didn't want to limit the total amount of time or the total number of speakers. So overall, this is something that I support. I, and I hope that commissions in the future don't restrict it anymore.
It's easier the way we do it now. It's more casual. It's friendlier. We're user-friendlyer. And I understand that there are communities that have issues. I can't tell you that maybe, I can only say that maybe twice a year are we here past midnight. And it is unfortunate for the public, and it's unfortunate probably for us. And maybe we don't make the best decisions. So certainly, I'm willing to support the midnight and the ten-thirty ending dates. Some of it is much more rigid than we are used to. And I think we will notice that, that feeling as we try this. I'm willing to try it. I don't see any reason we shouldn't. But I'm an advocate for the public being able to make, to provide input. And at no time do I really want to limit them. I think they have important things to tell us. And because they voted. I mean, we have, we listen. I, I think that's our primary, one of the primary things we have to do in a democracy is listen to our constituents. So I do that and I want to do that in all cases. I, I do almost think, and I don't know, Katie, let me ask you this. Is there a, would you consider not being treated equally if we were to allow more time for a group, a representative of a group? Is that possible? Do other communities do that?
So, so Katie, I just wanted to comment on that. Well, I appreciated these gentleman's comments. I'd like to think back to where we recently had representative from groups in rezoning. We had HOA, two HOA presidents present, and then thirty-five neighbors present as well. So those neighbors are in the HOA as well. So if that were the scenario, are we going to let the HOA president talk for ten minutes or twenty minutes to represent the group? And then the thirty neighbors talk for five minutes at a time when they're a part of that representative group? I, I guess that's where I would see the conflict. They're supposed to be represented by that person. I would hope that representative who's saying, I'm representing this group, has gone out and gained consensus from that group on how, on what they're going to present and what they're going to do. So then if they are going to do that, I guess, then you, you have people who would be here to listen to their representative, I guess, so to speak. We looked into it a little bit. Go ahead, Katie.
The only thing to answer your question, a, a person speaking, the speaker, is a group or a person. So yes, it would not be equal to allow a group to speak longer than a person. However, there is a way to make it work. And Shawnee has a process where they have a registered citizen interest group. And it's a process that you can go through. And you have to list the citizens who are in the group. And then those citizens are forgo, and then the individual can speak on behalf of the group. And they speak longer. But the individuals who are listed in the group cannot speak individually. So that their balance, what they're doing there is they're balancing that issue with, even though one person, being the group, gets longer, they're, they've registered as a citizen interest group. They've identified the citizens who would speak and they're, you know, that they're speaking in their place. So that's how they've tried to mitigate that equality issue. Whether or not that would, I mean, that's an untested issue, but they are the only city in Kansas that allows that. The other cities treat, I mean, because the law treats a speaker, whether it's a representative of a group or an individual, the same. They don't allow those distinctions. But if you wanted to do that, I would recommend some kind of process like Shawnee because it does provide a little more protection. But, but it is not the, I mean, it is certainly the only one we found in Kansas. Everyone else just treats groups the same.
If we explored that, would we have to table this issue now? Or could we pass this and then go back and look at amending?
We could do that. We could create a separate policy for a citizen interest group and then modify this, this policy as needed, depending on how you wanted to create citizen interest groups.
I would be interested in hearing more about that.
We, we had, is this what you're referring to, Kyle? Was it Lee Mill or Miller Park? I don't remember which one. We had three PowerPoints.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I was.
We had three PowerPoints.
Stone Point.
Stonehaven.
Stonehaven.
I think the example is just that, A, Katie brings up a good point with special interest groups. We don't know. We at city staff don't always know who they're representing, who's in that group. I could get up here and say, I represent so-and-so of Manhattan. And I'd like to speak longer on that. I guess in a process, maybe we could vet that out a little bit better.
Some way to validate.
Yeah.
I mean, even.
A way to validate.
We know, Richard, we know what he stated in the past, that he represents the homeowners. But, you know, we've never required Richard to produce validation that he was elected by that group.
Sure.
So we've always trusted him that, that he, what he said. So the issue with the homeowners association is a good one because even though they're members of that homeowners association, they may not, there, there could be a split opinion within that homeowners association. And it isn't really necessary to say that every, you should, you should forego somebody's right to speak on something just because they disagree with the homeowners association, even though they represent. So some kind of validation process that creates this list of people that I'm speaking for that we can sort out. And that's another reason for the signing in type stuff.
So let's talk about the ones that presented. It was three PowerPoints that they presented, right?
At least.
So did they give us a heads up on that? Did, did you get it on Tuesday?
I'd have to, I don't know, Gary.
We got them the day of the meeting.
I think they brought them in today.
So this process, so maybe when I think about, these things happen as a blip on, when we're having meetings until you bring them back to the forefront, that how do we address something like that? Because, because of that, we did, it did impact our vote. And I think maybe those discussions are important. I don't know how we would address such. What I, what I don't want to do is be so protective of how long people are speaking or what they're saying, not so much what they're saying, but so protective of time, when it's probably pretty important to our decision-making. So I want to treat the speech component and the time factor relevant to the issue. Because I think, I don't want to give preference just to time because we need to get stuff done.
I, I think the concern, I understand what you're saying, Commissioner. I think, I think the reason, one of the reasons for the policy is just so we're treating people equally. So Mayor Morris, if someone gets up here and she doesn't agree with what they're saying, so they're out here for, they've been going on for ten minutes, and she says, well, that's enough, let's, let's move on. But if the next guy comes up and that's the friend who's up here saying the positive thing, she lets them go on for twenty minutes, well, we violated the rights of that person who just spoke for ten minutes. That's the purpose of the timeframe. And, and I think if you can't, you know, five minutes is not brevity. Like, you could, if you've reached a consensus of a group, you should be able to explain the process and the outcomes and what you're trying to do. Like, what, what do you not agree with the process or what do you agree with the process? There's, there's, there's something to be said, like, to be going on for that, that timeframe.
Let, let me add, there's a couple things that the policy allows to do, you're concerned. First, an individual can still bring a presentation, and that individual would have five minutes to present it. So that, that opportunity's still there. Because we've created this optional signup in advance where you can speak in a certain order, so we're giving preference to people, there's nothing to preclude four people from signing up one after another and each presenting five minutes of a presentation. As long as the each individual is stuck to five minutes. So, so there's an opportunity to accomplish what you're wanting if a group is passionate and wants to deliver in that way. There's a mechanism for them to do that under this policy.
That's my only concern, that I don't mind a presentation. I just, in my head, I haven't sorted it out exactly because we've been so free with our time. So some of those have been, you know, have changed my decision from when I came into the meeting to the end of the meeting. So I just want to make sure I hear everybody out. And I don't think five minutes is a terrible number to hold people accountable to. And you're right, they can step up and do it. But that's something we need to inform the public about. Here are your options if you are an organization. And I want us to be clear on how we inform the public. Not that they, sometimes the public doesn't know what they don't know. So it's up to us to inform them about, if you have an organization, this is what you can do. Here are your options, instead of waiting for them to ask us and thinking that we're anti-public comment.
Yeah, I think, I think that's something I didn't cover in my, it's a good point, Commissioner, ready that, you know, if the commissioner wants to pass this tonight, that's probably going to be one of the first things we have to do as a city is educate the public. I mean, it's going to be a change. You have all mentioned it for us on how we operate during the meeting. It's also going to be a big change for the public. So we need to make sure we educate them on how So we need to make sure we educate them on how they, you know, if they have PowerPoints, when do they need to have that to us? What form do we prefer those presentations? You know, if they want to provide comment in the packet, when do they have to have it to us by? You know, so I think, I think there's going to be a lot of public education after this comes out to talk about. And, and just like our city attorney Katie just said, you know, talking about, you could do a presentation with your group if you wanted to do, where you each presented a portion of things that would be allowed. You could go up there and go present that, so that's going to be a big portion of it.
One final comment. I am, I would, I would not support having a form like you included in the packet that each person has to sign and fill out in order to, that's a formality that I'm just not interested in. So you may want to look at that last page in the packet and see if that's, maybe there just for our information.
USD 383 form.
Oh, that's from USD 383.
Right.
Okay.
I know it's not ours.
Yeah.
But I just meant that, that I'm not willing to go there.
Okay.
With that, with our process. Okay. Was, was there something we were going to really change or not?
So I thi, I think the issue was going to be to clarify the wording on presenters for, in a non-public hearing and Katie's kind of said, go ahead.
I wrote down the two things. I just wanted to clarify the adjourn, on C3, the adjournment of the work session is at 10:30 PM, which I believe you've, you've provided that.
Yes.
But the change you wanted was on item 4A3, the presentation. And I am suggesting, based on your comments, we could, if you want to adopt it tonight, you can make a motion just to change that to read something like, the suggestion would be present, that the presentation would be by city staff and/or other listed presenters on the agenda item.
Okay. The presentation will be by?
City staff and/or other listed presenters on the agenda item, which allows this, the K-State or the, you know, the other people that you've had concerns about. And then they would be as part of the, a presentation of the item, so they would not be.
Yeah. Okay, good. That would help take care of it and then you could fix it after the fact.
Or their design needs.
Yeah. We always have a situation where somebody's a last-minute substitute.
Okay.
Yeah, well, even I.
From a staff perspective.
Sure. I'm looking at that.
Had a curve tonight when John Adam was the presenter instead of what my script said.
You might have President Myers coming, but you, then you may end up with the provost instead.
Sure.
Okay. Do we have?
I move we approve resolution number 050118-B as amended by the reading of the city attorney, setting meeting procedures and public comment guidelines for the city of Manhattan.
Second, there's a motion and a second. Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Reddy.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner McKee.
Yes.
Mayor Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dodson.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Thank you all. The next item on the.
I want to make one other comment just because it doesn't have anything to do with the motion, but on your slide, you know, you mentioned an online comment form, you know, for the packets and I hope city staff pursues that, figure out an easy way to, to do that, because that'd be a great way to get everybody to type in their stuff, especially if it can be done electronic and that way it collects it, it saves a lot of time.
And there will be people who aren't on the web, but for the most part, I think people would do that. That would help protect the city clerk, who's the contact person, from a lot of time-consuming interaction. Okay. All right. The next item on the agenda is a quarterly report update from Parks and Recreation and our presenter is Eddie Eastus, the Director of Parks and Recreation. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to load a presentation while we do. Melissa's going to pass out the, a hard copy for you so you can scribble notes on it.
Okay.
If you're like me.
It's not that we're distracted, we're just watching the weather. I hope you're watching the weather too.
Yes, it is something to think about.
Thank you. Thank you.
I do want to point out, besides myself tonight, I will have several other presenters. I think it'll be important that the division heads that we have in our large department has an opportunity to represent the areas that they're specifically responsible for. Also in the audience, I appreciate Melissa Kirkwood, our community relations officer and preparing a lot of the information for us tonight. Alfonso Leva is with us tonight as well, our park planner. You recall him from presentations here the other night. So we have a number of people here that can answer any detailed questions you might have that I would not be able to answer. I think it's important that we start off again, who we are, Parks and Recreation. I'm going to introduce and cover a few slides. Randy Clifford, our Director of Recreation is going to come up and talk about recreation programs, swimming pools, parks and trails. Wyatt Thompson, our Assistant Director, as well as Casey Smithson, our Parks and Superintendent, is going to talk about the 28 parks, the thousand-plus acres that we take care of, as well as the miles and miles of trails that we also manage and take care of. Susan Adams, the Flinney Hills Discovery Center Director, is here also tonight to talk about her areas of responsibility. And we'll close up with Scott Schumaker, the Zoo Director. Our overall mission statement for Parks and Recreation, again, I'm going to cover who we are, building a healthy community through people, parks, and programs. And we'll talk about some of those people as well. Again, we have seven different divisions within Parks and Recreation. You're familiar with most all of them, that I like to point out specifically what they are. We have Parks and Recreation Administration in general, that's where I'm housed at. City Parks, Casey Smithson, Recreation, Randy Clifford. The Douglas Center, David Baker is the Director there. Animal Shelter right now, that position is currently open. We'll be recruiting that soon. Cornerstones of our department, of course, of the Sunset Zoo and the Flinney Hills Discovery Center. I list over, on the right of that slide, on my right, the people that are responsible for those divisions. I like to point all of those out because they're responsible for a tremendous amount of programs and activities for this community. David Baker's not with us tonight, but he's with the Douglas Center Director. If you get an opportunity to sit and visit with David, please do so. He's really done a great job at the Discovery Center, I'm sorry, at the Douglas Center and I, I love to visit with him. If you don't realize, he was a baseball coach at K-State in the eighties. And if you want to sit and visit with him, it's amazing the contacts that he has. He coached up at Creighton, he coached in Oklahoma. He brings a tremendous amount of experience and has really benefited that facility. Everybody on this listing, tremendous professionals provide the programs and activities that this community enjoys. So I really want to make sure they have an opportunity to speak tonight. What's important to me is our community outreach. We have a number of advisory boards. We have five different advisory boards which represent about 35, 38 different individuals that help give us guidance. We have our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, our Cemetery Advisory Board. Mike Moll is, is the Cemetery Section and serves as liaison for that. Arts and Humanities Advisory Board, Randy Clifford serves as the liaison for that board as well. The Douglas Center Advisory Board, of course, is David Baker. And the Flinney Hills Discovery Center with Susan. Also, but it's not listed on here, Scott has two groups that he works with, the Friends of Sunset Zoo, which has a large listing of people who are on that board, as well as his Zoo Trust. Susan also has a foundation that she works with. So we receive a lot of public input and we really appreciate that because we want to make sure our programs and our activities and our focuses are consistent with what the community would like to see. On the other side, in red, I really want to point out, and this is indicative of our department on a regular basis, in the last 30 days, we've hosted eight public meetings. Again, it's trying to listen to the community, show the community items that we're working on and make sure we're focusing and providing what they would like to have. Also, that 44-member steering committee for the upcoming indoor centers, that's very, very important and I appreciate the 44 members that have reached out to us, indicated an interest that they want to be a part of these important projects, they're going to have impacts on this community for decades. We'll be starting up our first steering committee meeting later this month, anxious with Macallan Gordon to be able to work with us and facilitate that group. It's a large group. It'll be a challenge, but thankful, very much so, that we have that much community interest as we had such a positive vote this past fall. People are staying engaged, they want to be a part, they want to see that these will work and be designed and be real useful for the community. Please, as we go through this, because we're going to have several different speakers, we're going to cover a lot of topics, we're going to try to do it before any weather hits us as well, ask questions throughout. I would appreciate that because you'll have different people up here at different times. Major projects that we are going to be dealing with in our administration, as well as all the department, of course, are the indoor recreation centers. These are the basic timelines, you've seen these previously. We'll be in schematic design of those indoor centers that are going to be both at Eisenhower and Anthony Middle Schools throughout 2018 as well into part of 2019. 2019, these projects will come back to you. You'll be able to see those, be a part of that design before we bid those out and we're, we have groundbreaking anticipated in February 2020. That's a long ways away from now. We're not giving you a real detailed timeline because there's a lot of things that'll influence that between now and then. This is what we're hoping to hit. This is what we're detailing out with Macallan Gordon and the steering committee. It's going to be a long design process. We'll make sure that you stay involved in that as well. Those facilities to open, you know, late 2020. And I'm saying facilities, we're trying to accommodate the schools as much as we can, be as close as we can to opening those two facilities as close together as possible. They won't open at the same time, but we hope to in a relatively short timeframe. The other major project, you've seen it several times, is the Douglas Center, Recreation Center. I'm trying to steer that away from the Southeast Neighborhood Recreation Center. That's not the name the Douglas Center Advisory Board would prefer. I would like for them to take that naming up again at some time. We've used Southeast Neighborhood Recreation Center as kind of an acronym with community development for some time. The Douglas Center Advisory Board needs to weigh in and they have considered and they're going to continue to consider what an appropriate name for that facility would be. They would like to be able to have Douglas Center still as a part of the name. They'll take that up at their next advisory board meeting. At that facility, working with Bruce McMillan's team, we're in the design process now. We hope to bid that this summer. We hope to have a groundbreaking late this year. We'd like to be able to get some of the work done before winter timeframe and so that we can open up in the summer of 2019.
Quick question about facilities.
Yes.
And I could be missing this. Obviously, this is very clear to us, the timelines and what's happening there, but for the Parks and Rec Department as a whole, is there like a facilities master plan? A facilities master plan or some type of like, what are we going to do with the community house long-term and the other Parks and Rec public facilities that we have? Do we have any sort of master plan that incorporates all of those together?
No, we do not have an overall master plan.
Is there a particular reason for that? Is it just something that we haven't explored or is there kind of a pitfall with it?
Previous planning effort that we had was our Strategic Facility Improvement Plan. We specifically did not call it a comprehensive master plan. It's what we wish to be able to have, but that's a, that's a very expensive and extensive document. It did look at it, all of our facilities, and it did give us short-term, mid-term, long-term improvements that were needed for a majority of the facilities that we have, which totaled up to over $70 million in improvements, both, you know, immediate, short-term, long-term. We still refer to that document all the time.
And when was that document created?
It's called the Strategic Facility Improvement Plan.
Okay.
And it's on our website. It's a long document, so it's in various chapters, but it'd be good for somebody to, to look at it because we refer to it in our capital improvement request.
When was it passed, do you remember? Or when was it created?
Three years ago.
Something like that.
Yeah, in that timeframe. The exact date, the commission did accept that.
Okay, thank you.
That did lead, that did lead to the facility feasibility study. Excuse me.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. These three projects are fun to talk about. Totally community-oriented, driven, funded projects. Peace Memorial Auditorium, you're very familiar with those. When I say totally funded, it's not, the city is participating in the funding of the Peace Memorial Auditorium. That project will actually get its construction started in June and it's still staying within the 180 or so construction dates. It's waited until June because we have a very large graduation ceremony that's going to be happening this month. Over 600 people that were anticipating to be in the auditorium, they're going to enjoy the auditorium because now it's air-conditioned. They wouldn't come previously. Now that it's air-conditioned, they will come in and utilize the facility. So we're waiting for the construction to start until after that graduation occurs. It lets us, gets our programs out of there as well and moved to some other location. So that project will kick off the first of June. The Johnny Call Plaza, very exciting. You heard some of that tonight already. A group of individuals have been funding and fundraising and designing this project. It's a project that's in the area, if it was a bid-out project, $260,000 or so. Right now, it's looking like through in-kind and financial donations, that it's, it's going to require maybe $50,000, $60,000 of additional fundraising to be able to do a substantial improvement to the Johnny Call area. Something that was envisioned with the City Park Master Plan, that there would be improvements to this area, some type of interpretive aspect to the Johnny Call area. Again, a private group has taken this and we have two commissioners that sit on that committee and appreciate their efforts tremendously, hoping for this project to be able to start construction late summer. If you haven't noticed, you heard tonight a little bit, but you can't look, tonight it's dark. Come by tomorrow and see Johnny Call has his birthday hat on now. He's had that on for a week and will be in for a while and that's, that's kind of helping people understand this project as they have his birthday party here next week. The Blue Mop Hill Scenic Overlook is with Manhattan Kiwanis Club. They've managed the Manhattan Letters for many, many years. They paint those letters just about every year. They do help provide access to the area. They recognize that there's a need to make the area more ADA accessible, more accessible to the general public. If you go there today, it's a little bit of a hike. This is going to be a great improvement that they're fundraising for and we'll see that improvement at some time as they progress with their fundraising. We'll move on to recreation with Randy Clifford, but that first part, happy to answer any questions if there would be. We only have about 50 more slides, so. Okay? Thank you, Randy.
All right. Thank you, Eddie.
Good evening, everyone. Wanted to touch, back up here, sorry. Just touch real quickly on a couple of slides and talk about some highlights with our, our recreation programs and facility operations. And you can see the numbers there, just try to represent some of our different and diverse offerings that we have available throughout the year and, and the numbers of people that are involved in those different areas. Obviously, adult sports and youth sports are one of your, are some of your cornerstone areas in terms of the number of people and how many folks are engaged with those programs, but they're, they're not the entire picture by any means. I will mention that because of the, the investment that was made out of the Annenberg facility a couple of years ago and the improvements that were made at that facility, we've seen a real resurgence in our tournament play. And again, in 2017, similar numbers to 16, we hosted 18 tournaments, over 500 teams and almost 7,000 players coming through. So pretty significant numbers, pretty significant impact of the community in terms of the involvement with the tournaments and majority of those are coming from out of town. I will also mention that one of our long-running programs, Arts in the Park, got another great lineup on tap for this summer, something that utilizes our facilities over City Park and very popular in the community and generally 10,000-plus spectators over the course of the season each, each year. And a couple of, you can see a couple of numbers there on our, some of our major facilities, our water parks attendance, as you know, we operate three facilities and so significant attendance over the course of the summer. And ice rink is another important program that we offer in the winter months that is definitely a kind of a specialized niche, but a lot of folks really take advantage of that too. Our total numbers there, and that's, that's a, that's a, not a non-duplicated number, so it's a total number of registrants, registrations that occur over the entire year, but you can see it's a pretty significant number too.
Randy?
Yes.
Just one question. For the, the tournaments in Annenberg, what was it before we put in the turf, the artificial turf?
We were, we had, we were down probably in the low teens on the number of tournaments and our, our team numbers had dropped down into that 300 range. So we saw a 200-plus team increase after those improvements were made. Just want to highlight a few new recreation.
Just want to highlight a few new recreation programs that have been offered since the beginning of the year. Again, program development, continuing to meet growth and demand in the community, being responsive to the, to the citizens and some of their interests and some of the things that people bring forward. And just highlighted a few new programs here that we've offered this year. Wanted to just mention the, the recent event that occurred just here recently in April. A new event, Youth Outdoor Adventure Challenge, in cooperation with the Wildwood Outdoor Adventure Park and a variety of other sponsors that help support that program. We had a great response to that. We were, we were going to have a maximum of 200 kids signed up, and, and we had that in about two weeks' time. So maxed out that event very quickly, and for a first-time event, went very smoothly. A lot of, a lot of good response, and kids had a great time. Moms probably, moms and dads probably had a lot of extra laundry to do because they came back pretty muddy and had a lot of fun with that event. But those are the kind of events we're trying to, again, look at interests and, and demands in the community and design events that meet some of those interests. And really, with, with a strong emphasis on engaging family, families and youth in our community.
Randy, I thought it was a wonderful, Randy, I thought it was a wonderful event. There were so many families there, so many children scurrying around on the hillsides, and they had a ball, all of them. And they had individual races for certain age groups. But I think you need to plan for double that next year.
Right. We found that we have a little more capacity than what, what we anticipated after running it the way we did, so we'll, we'll try to increase that number. But you're right, there'll be more response, I think, next year. And also, just touch real quickly on our, our water parks. Although Mother Nature hasn't really acted like it until just the last few days, we are less than a month away from, you know, opening our water parks for another season. And so we have City Park Water Park scheduled to open on Memorial Day weekend, and our other parks will kind of follow as staffing allows. The typical challenges with recruiting and hiring lifeguard staff, as you can see there, we only had about 40% of our lifeguards returning from last, last year, and that's just a transition we go through each year. Sometimes we retain more than others, but it's just, it's part of that process with, with seasonal staff and, and having that turnover. But our recruitment of new guards is ongoing, and we have, we have been fortunate to make some pay scale adjustments that will phase in over two years to help us try to remain competitive in, in the market that we, we serve here and with some of the other providers in, in the area.
I'd like to suggest you use Nextdoor to advertise for youth lifeguards.
Okay.
Actually, I've seen a parent, two parents inquire about how do you, where can you get lifeguard training in the summer? But I think that would be an additional place, and I'm sure you recruit everywhere you can. So that's just one more.
We're open to any and all ideas because we want to have out there as many places as possible. And you always have, May is that month where all of a sudden, you know, families decide, okay, we need to find a job, or our child needs to find a job, and so there are, are plenty of opportunities. But there's, as, as many of you know, we, we really have a lot of pressure for many of our seasonal positions, and just with unemployment being relatively low in the community and there being job opportunities out there, it is a competitive market, and so we continue to do the things we can to try to make that as attractive position as possible.
I have a couple of questions on that as well.
Sure.
Do we offer incentives in terms of pay for returning lifeguards?
We do.
Okay, good.
We have a graduated pay scale, basically.
Great. And then how, how flexible are the schedules? I mean, I, I used to lifeguard, and when I worked, it was always from 12:30, 8 o'clock. There was no 4 to 8. Is there any flexibility in terms of like half shifts or things like that?
They are, they're extremely flexible.
Have you, do you do any targeting to like young professionals who maybe have full-time jobs? Or are you mostly targeting high schoolers?
Primarily the high school and college age group that, that fits most of our needs there. But we're open to, to those folks. And there was a time when I think you would see young adults, you know, working in that setting a little bit more sometimes, but I don't, we don't see that as much as we maybe did five or 10 years ago, but it is.
Somebody asked me about that not that long ago, and they just didn't know. They had also had a similar experience where it was, they just always worked the whole day, and obviously that wasn't going to be possible for them, so they didn't know what opportunities were in the evening. So it might just be something that you would explore.
Sure. And look at some scheduling opportunities for the evenings and weekends when we do operate, you know, at multiple locations still. We're very open to those kinds of situations because, again, it takes about 200 staff members between lifeguards, customer service staff, the deck attendants, cashiers, and our management staff to operate the three facilities. So it's a pretty significant workforce just to operate our facilities. But again, we have, that is right around the corner, and preparation's being made. I'll let Casey touch on a couple of things they're doing with the operations side, but we're, we're excited about another season coming up, and, and we were able this year to not implement any changes in admission fees or the season pass costs and try to maintain some consistency with that as well. Glad to answer any questions you might have about our water parks or any of our recreation programs. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Randy.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Casey Smithson, Park Superintendent. Just as you see the slide, I kind of want to just visit a little bit about how, how encompassing my division, City Parks, does in, in town. We, we cover a lot of ground. As you can see, the 28th, you're going to see future slides that will kind of place it throughout town and see how, how broad we actually are. But City Parks encompasses Parks Division, Forestry, Cemeteries, and Horticulture. I'll just, just a quick little rundown on some of those items, just so you kind of get a context of what we're doing, of what we do on a day-to-day basis. Again, City Parks takes care of grounds within the parks, playgrounds, the trail maintenance, and many of the city-owned buildings and historical structures as well. They also do the, as Randy said, we actually take care, Parks takes care of the, the water itself, the water parks. So we actually maintain the, all the pumps and the motors there. Forestry, on, as you see, 23,000 street trees and approximately 5,000 park trees that they, that we actively maintain and monitor for, for care of those. They also are highly active in the Arbor Day, so we celebrate Arbor Day. Tree City USA, we're one of the long-term towns that are, have been a part of the Tree City USA. And then we also have the, the annual street tree replacement program, where obviously it's, it's available, available now through the city website. Excuse me. And if someone's interested in having a street tree or a tree replaced on their property, they can request that through the, through our program. And then we actually try to maintain a one-to-one replacement for the trees that we take out in a year. We try to make sure that we're putting that many back in to our program, so. Horticulture, again, wide, wide encompassing group. The beautification in town, from the roundabout out of Grand Mir to Discovery Center grounds to Rose Garden, City Park, the City Hall proper, they, they cover a lot of ground as well. Not only by hand-watering, but just keeping, keeping care of each of the plants that are in those beds. Obviously, cemeteries, we've got two cemeteries in town, and that crew is very active in, in providing full-service internments throughout the year. And that's primarily their duties is maintaining those, the two facilities for, for those services. Just a quick overview, that was, that's kind of individual sections. As, as a whole, our division also maintains seven, pretty much seven days' operation once we, we go into this early spring, clear till the fall. From pool operations to, we also take care of sanitation for all the public restrooms that we maintain, trash pickup throughout all the parks and grounds. So really, it's just, it's, it's, once we get rolling right now, it's, it's, we're seven days a week operation, and, and that goes throughout the summer. We also perform a lot of the levee maintenance, at least the mowing, that portion of it, tree removal right away, and stormwater mowing, we do a portion of that as well. So it is a joint participation that we participate with Public Works on. We have quite a bit of irrigation work that our staff is specialized in as well, and natural turf maintenance. We're seeing a lot of that work that we're doing right now, so. The other big portion of my program is snow removal. When Public Works is out running the streets, we're also, majority of my crew is also out clearing parking lots, city sidewalks, and trails, any hardened surface trails that we have, so. And then probably the other one is the mayor's tree, our parade and tree lighting ceremony. We, we are one of the partners in that program and, and are, are very big participants in a lot of different events throughout town, so. Just a quick, I know you guys may know some of that, but I wanted to just at least touch base of what actually we encompass when, when I say we're, we're citywide and we do a little bit everywhere. We, we do cover a lot of ground. Just to, again, to give you an update on, on the water parks and, and where we're at, just so you kind of have an idea. Pools, as Randy said, we're pretty much year-round working on pools now. A part of that was triggered by the quality-of-life sales tax dollars, excess dollars that we put in over the last two years. It's really made it where we had to, to engage work on those projects. And it's just a matter of, it's a maintenance that we need to make sure that we're doing, and it, now it is pretty much 12 months of the year. So we've got staff dedicated that's, that's doing that work. But in doing so, we're really ramping up right now. We have water in Northview already, heated water that, that, from some of those projects we've done, so we're ready, getting prepared for lifeguard training. I know it seems early, but right now we have to have it in there and get it, it's a staged process. Right now, we're, we got Northview in. Next week, we'll be working on city, getting water in city. The week after, we'll be working, working on getting CECO. So it is a time-consuming process, but it actually, there is a process behind it. So one item that he, was on the previous slide, was the climbing walls. We have incorporated two climbing walls into CECO. I think that was a needed request from the public about additional activities, more things for the kids to do whether they're, people to do whether they're. So we're, we actually removed the three-meter diving board, and we put the two climbing walls in there to see, to judge the impact of that, if that's what the public really, really wants, so. Excuse me. Blue Earth Water Feature, we also maintain that. It has been operational since the first part of April. And then the Splash Park here in City Park is planned, we're planning on bringing it on May 11th, about the time. But get it up and operational before school starts, and the weather obviously warms up a little bit, so. Couple, just a quick part, projects that we've been working on. I know there'd be another slide here future on some larger projects, but we just are wrapping up the Union Pacific Depot Repair Renovations. That was a long time coming. I've, I've been working on that probably since I've been here, and I'm glad to actually get it accomplished. So appreciate the CIP project on that. So again, with Forestry Section is partnered with the Rotary, the Concept Rotary to plant several hundred trees in, in parks and cemeteries, and we appreciate Commissioners' time in that as well, so. And another one that you guys may have seen is the Mall Plaza Fountain. We, we did some major renovations over the winter on it and actually had it operational for the Manhattan High School's prom last weekend or the weekend before, but we, we kicked that off, so. And then oncoming projects we've got this year, we've got the cemetery carriage house roof we're going to be replacing as well over this, this winter, or, excuse me, this summer, so. As well as the roof on the City Auditorium and the animal shelter, so. Again, there's many more projects, but that's just some of that, to show you kind of the broad encompassing that Parks Division, we, we touch a lot of things and we support a lot of programs, so. I'd be open to any other questions and let, then we have some more slides and we have weather coming, so. Appreciate your time this evening if you have any questions.
Thank you, Casey. With such a big program, I'm disappointed we don't have questions, but thank you very much for a thorough presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners. Before I move off of this slide, I'll just say that we had joked about, as we were preparing this, that we would have a Name That Park quiz at the end of our presentation based on these shapes that you see. We'll skip that for tonight.
I actually tried to do that. I didn't make it.
You, you might.
Let me introduce Wyatt Thompson, Assistant Director of the Parks and Recreation Department.
Thank you very much. That may show up on social media later. It may also be a game of, is it a park or is it a state? We, we think there's some similarities between some of our, our states around the area, so. I want to talk about Trails quickly. Trails are our largest and likely our most popular park. If you take all of the uses that happen on our trail system, you can use our trails to get to a lot of the, the activities and facilities where we host programs. And a lot of folks that will never, for whatever reason, join one of our programs, will use our trails as a means of fitness and recreation and transportation as well. And so building out that network, we feel is very important for our community. We have published a trail guide. We published the first one in 2015 and have updated it every year since. The 2018 guide is wrapping up and will be available soon. And we're, we're pleased that every year we can add more trail lines, more purple lines to that document to, to further increase that connectivity around the community. We're up to 45 miles of trail citywide. Parks Division's, Casey's Division manages about 29 miles of those trails. K-State, USD 303, Riley County, all manage other portions of that network. But we're, we're very pleased with, with how that network is growing. We have a variety of, of trail types, hard surface, concrete, rock, kind of a softer surface, the rock gravel, as well as we're getting more into natural surface hiking-type trails. And we think that each different type serves a different user, whether you're a hiker, a walker, a jogger, a cyclist. And so having that diversity within our trail system is very important. We also want to understand our trail users. And so in 2016, we did a, we partnered with the Sunflower Foundation and did a comprehensive trail use study, surveys and interviews and focus groups. In 2017, we partnered with the MPO and installed trail counters throughout the community, different trails. We counted both pedestrians and cyclists, got great data from that, and we'll be doing that again later this summer. I think we have them back in May, June, July. And so we're able to use that data for project development and find out who's actually, or the numbers of people that are on those different trail systems. And going forward with trail development in the community, obviously, we received support in November to dedicate some funds for trail development through the rec and trail sales tax and public engagement, and engaging with those users will be an important part of that process. We've identified some areas of emphasis as we prioritize specific projects, and we want to look at new trails and sidewalks to fill gaps, existing trails, maintenance, and how can we improve those, as well as looking specifically at intersections and creating safe crossings across some of our busier roadways so that people can be more connected and not divided by those, by those places. So that's, that's kind of a summary. We're looking forward to engaging with the community on, on what those projects will be over the next few months and, and then implementing over the next few years. And so speaking of, of projects, as Casey talked about, we're all over the community, and the, this map here shows a variety of projects that are in various stages of planning, design, or construction. We have about 30 projects that are at various stages there, and then a number that are kind of in the wings waiting to get started as we, as we free up staff time and resources to do so. So we have projects, as I said, in, in a lot of different, different parks. I'll touch on just a, a couple of them for you. At Sunrise Cemetery, we have some roadway improvements and some other planning that's going on to expand the life, to plan for the future life of the cemetery. We have some renovations going on at the Douglas Center to, in, at the existing building to renovate locker rooms and restrooms. Of course, we have the new center that is currently in design and will be open and under construction next year. We have the Old Blue River Trail, which is in the Northview area, which is in design and will be out for bid in the fall and then under construction. We have a couple of railroad crossings at Linear Trail on South Manhattan Avenue and Pecan Circle to get people safely across the, the railroad tracks. We have design of improvements at Northeast Park for irrigation and electrical improvements as well. We have a number of planning processes underway, as you heard a couple of weeks ago, with City Park Master Plan, Warner Park Master Plan. Scott, the shoemaker, will talk about the Zoo Master Plan in just a little while. So very busy between Alfonso and I and, and, and community partners. We're, we're trying to make all those go forward, and we do track each of those projects through each phase of development as we, as we move through the lifecycle of those projects. And that is my piece for tonight. Happy to answer questions about those or other topics. I will introduce Susan, Art Discovery Center Director.
Susan Adams.
Good evening. Susan Adams, Director of the Flynn Hills Discovery Center. Thank you for the invitation to come and, and talk about our department. Obviously, we're very proud of it. For the Flynn Hills Discovery- For the Flint Hills Discovery Center, we of course want to start always with our mission. Celebrate, our center inspires people to celebrate, explore and care for the Flint Hills. Keep that as our always focus, but also listening to the community and finding out the other needs that they would like to happen at the center. We want to, of course, promote the fact that we had over 70,000 guests in 2017. We're very proud of that. We've also celebrated our sixth anniversary this year. So, pretty excited about that, too. We are again, number one rated attraction in Manhattan. I know competition with Johnny Col, but it's always good to know we're still up there. Excited for his birthday party next week, too. The other component I want to mention is we also are in a membership drive right now. So, hopefully, you've heard about that. That gives our members an opportunity to also voice their opinion as well as our advisory board, and we do hear a lot of comments from them as well. Sorry about that. Some of the special things in the grant side for the Discovery Center, I know the funding is always a question. One of the things that we're extremely proud of is the Carolyn Pine Foundation Grant. We received the $10,000 to finish off the third floor to the first floor interpretive trail, which we're working on and should be accomplished by the end of the summer. We earned the Science In Vivo, which is Take the Science to the People, and we're working with Kansas State University. We attended the spring football game and had great attendance and participation there. We've received a grant from West Star Foundation doing Science, Technology, Engineering and Math Grant, and we'll be applying that to our Community Day, which will be in September. We also have a partnership with KSU Archaeology Department Grant and then also one with USD 383, the 21st Century Community Grant as well. In 2019, you know, we did come in January of this year to present to you our financials as well as the progress of the Discovery Center. And there was some question about our sponsorship dollars. So, with the help of the finance, we are looking to move all of our donations and sponsorship dollars back into our general fund and pulling those out of our project account codes, so that it would be very transparent to everyone, the dollars that we are bringing into the facility. We're also recommending that we would transfer the transient guest tax to the Annaberg Park Improvement Turf and sports lighting expense. And the Discovery Center funding would then come from Special Parks and Recreation Funds, and that's for 2019. I love this page because this is what we're all about, all the fun things that happen at the Discovery Center. We just closed the Rainforest Adventure, and if you missed that, you missed a great opportunity to see a butterfly release party and great attendance and turnout for that event. And that exhibit itself has truly paid for itself and it's been a great opportunity for the community to really come out. We've had lots of school visits also recently. Cannot say enough, Be the Dinosaur is right around the corner. Thank you also for those plugs. It opens May 12th. People are looking very forward to it as well. I think it offers a lot for every age group.
I promise from now, I promise from now on, I'll get the date right.
It's okay. Thank you for the plug, though, Jared. We appreciate it. And that will go through Labor Day. And then, we have an exhibit called Bison and then also Wolves and Wildlands for the Fall. We also have our big special events coming, Flint Hills Festival, which we had very large attendance at last year and we anticipated it to be even bigger, full of food trucks and kids' activities, but also adult activities, entertainment, the bubbles, a climbing wall, lots of things for people to get engaged with. And then, we have our National Day of the Cowboy in July and then a Free Community Day in September. What is not listed there, I apologize, is our Veterans Day as well, which is usually a sponsored free day for the community. Were there any questions or anything I could answer for? Thank you for your time.
Let me just ask on the last one about the transfer of the funding. What's the rationale there?
I'll take that one. So, one of the aspects is that there seems to always be a lot of, at least some controversies over the bed tax going to the Discovery Center. And so, I consider, and there seems to be more support within some of that group to support more park and recreation or athletics components to bring folks to town. And so, essentially, we're trading the dollars through and putting the bed tax money into the turf and other types of the, of aspects at Annaberg Park and moving the Special Park and Recreation to support the Discovery Center. So, both are within the mission. It's an idea. I think it's just, it's something that we'll bring forward as part of the 2019 budget proposal. And if you like it, that's fine. Be good to get feedback from the public on it and some of the groups that support those components.
That's just that when, Susan, when you said you're the number one attraction, that would argue the other way, so.
I don't disagree. I was one of the authors of the original bed tax proposals and I've made several to go to the full two cents, which we, was in the original plan versus the one. So, that would cover it and we're doing great things to increase our attendance. So, if that continues to happen too, then we should need less help. So, that's all part of the plan. So, you know, it's a concept and certainly, we don't have to do that, but we thought we'd throw it out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. The last letter of the alphabet, the zoo.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Welcome.
I'm Scott Shoemaker and I'm the Zoo Director. So, we have a few slides that'll kind of give you an idea of what's going on at the zoo in the upcoming months. Obviously, the first thing is the parking lot expansion. If you've been up to the zoo, you can tell that that is underway right now. And that parking lot expansion, as you remember, is being funded by the excess sales taxes that, from the sunsetted sales tax plan. The master plan for the zoo is also underway and it is in its final stages. And that will come to you folks probably midsummer is my guess. We'll be talking to the consultants on that, but hopefully, you'll see that master plan in the summer for your consideration. Attendance to date, as of the end of April, 14,769. It's been a cold spring for us. I will say that the last week is pretty indicative of our normal attendance. We have been very, very busy. And so, I think we'll, if the weather holds, we'll have a pretty decent year. We did do a Community Appreciation Day on March 24th. That's a free day for the zoo. And we had over 3,000, almost 3,000 people come to that event. And the weather was really, really nice that day. And so, that really helps when you're in outside venue. Special events coming up, as I mentioned, we've already done Community Appreciation Day. We also just finished our Party for the Planet, which is our Earth Day celebration that rained all day. That was that Saturday that rained all day. We have Mother's Days coming up where moms get in free with a paying child. We have three free kids' dates through the summer, June, July and August. The first Saturday of the month is a free day for kids 12 and under. So, then we also have a Father's Day event where dads get in free. Also, coming up in August is our Water Safari Event. That's always a big event. Fire Department's usually out there. We spray a lot of water around and talk about water conservation. So, don't ask me why. It's spectacular.
Because it's hot.
Yeah, because it is hot. Kids have a great time with that event. By far, our biggest event's our Halloween event. That'll be the 27th, 28th of this year. And that's always, weather permitting, a huge, huge weekend for the zoo.
I think that Water Safari one is also in partnership with Conso Water Matters Day.
It is.
They do a lot of little kiosks.
Right.
Wouldn't say kiosks, but then there's about flooding and all of these other water.
Yes, ma'am. It's become a really good partnership for us and gives us an opportunity to talk about water and the value of water to us all. This is kind of a rough rendering of the Zoo Master Plan to date. Again, as I said, it'll come to you hopefully in midsummer and hopefully, we can talk about a lot of exciting things that can come to the zoo in the future. This is our big project right now, Expedition Asia. This is three exhibits that will be built in our Asian part of the zoo. This accomplishes a couple of things for us. Obviously, it builds exhibits for these three highly endangered species, the Malayan Tiger, the Sloth Bear and the Amur Leopard. All three are on the verge of extinction in the wild. And so, this is an opportunity for us to not only display these animals, but be part of a conservation breeding program for all three species. And so, that will be huge for us and hopefully for the species as well. It also will finish the zoo as far as ADA accessibility goes. When this is done, the zoo will be 100% ADA accessible. And if you've been out to the zoo, you know, we have a very challenging terrain. So, that's going to be exciting for us. It'll also create some more public meeting spaces, rental opportunities for us. It has a giant elevated plaza overlook that overlooks all three of the exhibits and will be a really fun place to gather and watch these animals. And so, we're excited about that. We're hoping to actually have a ceremonial groundbreaking for this in early November. It's a $3.2 million project, partially funded by the excess sales tax. We're still waiting on the final numbers from finance, but they have given us some pretty good estimates. And if their estimates are accurate, the city part of this will be about 1.7 million. And we are in the process of raising 1.5 million in private donor dollars. So, it's almost a one-for-one match. And so, we're very excited that we're able to leverage those sales tax dollars to get donor dollars to make this project happen. And so, this will be a huge asset to the zoo and just part of our continuing growth. And that is all I have. Expedition Asia, by the way, will also be coming to you folks this summer for your review and approval.
Thank you very much, Scott.
Thank you.
That's a lot to cover. We went through that pretty quick. But, and I know we're watching the weather and that probably holds our questions a little bit, but again, a real professional staff out here, they cover a lot of area. If you total up all the visitations from the pools, the zoo, the Discovery Center, parks, trails, programs and activities, it's hundreds of thousands of touches that Parks and Recreation has and provides for the community through the year. Substantial, substantial. These guys do a lot. David Baker, I didn't see you in the audience before, but David is with us as well and certainly can answer questions. Quite proud of what he's accomplishing at the Douglas Center and making that a substantial complex and looking forward to that construction. But any questions, we're happy to answer. Or if we can chase any other information for you, too, happy to do so. Yes, sir?
First of all, thanks for what all of you do. We're blessed with great park system. You know, when we put money into things, it's a little difficult to figure out how we're doing. So, what I'd ask you to do, if we're going to do these quarterly, and I think we are, is when you come back, have some kind of a diagram that might show where we've been and, for example, where we started on trails, let's just say, over the past five years. Here's the number of trail miles we had, here's the number we have now. Here's the number of tournaments we had, here's the number of tournaments we have now. Those kinds of, and you know, you can do that for a lot of things, pool, whatever it is. But wherever we can find that kind of data, it'd be very useful to us, so that we know that when we put money into something, it's actually resulting in something.
Right.
I mean, the pictures are all wonderful, the snapshots are great, and most of us are aware of what's going on. But what we like to see is when we put a dollar in, what is that yielding in terms of gain and what we're getting for the future?
Good point. And we certainly can. We have great examples with the zoo improvements, Discovery Center improvements, the Twin Oaks improvements, the pool improvements, all of those.
We see some of this at the budget, but I think it'd be even better here because we're, it's a little different setting.
Right. Good point.
Excellent presentations. That's a whole lot of information. We do have an extraordinary quality of life in the city of Manhattan. Is there, as we look at, I see a lot of growth, whether it's the zoo, Discovery Center, our pools, our parks, whatever it might be. In the past few years, have we closed down anything? For example, have we noticed a certain park not being used as much that we decided maybe that's not the place for it? Have we, you know, one of my, I think one of the things that bugs me is we keep, not only in the city, but any organization, we add, add, add without seeing, looking back and saying, hey, that's not being utilized as much. Maybe we can use it for something else. And I don't mean just a park, I mean in anything in that where we said, you know, nobody's using this trail. Or have we just gone on to improve it to make sure that people use it? Have we taken anything off of there is what I'm wondering. Do you, can you?
The only thing that comes to mind really is our old park office.
Oh, well, yes.
That's something that's very recognizable.
Where you've been there for 20 years.
That's not being used a lot right now. No, I would say our parks in general are actually increasing. And Casey and his staff have really put an emphasis in improving overall turf quality around the community. And, you know, that invites people, that invites people to utilize City Park for practices in a variety of things in those open spaces. I don't think anything comes to mind that we're using any less.
Okay. That's fine, but sometimes when I think about even budget, where we're constantly increasing on a whole lot of things, so then we tend to be top-heavy with expenditures that maybe we could have utilized in other ways or looked at it. So, I was just wondering if we did that for anything. I know for Annaberg, I'm really impressed at the playability of it now, and I'm looking forward to seeing that also at CECO when we do all of those renovations, as well as with the tennis courts. So, great improvements and thank you for all the updates. And also, keeping it succinct, even though this is a lot of paper, you had a lot to say, but you had only like three or four minutes apiece. So, that's very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you, too. It was an excellent presentation and I appreciate, I'm sorry your department heads had to stay so late, but it's beneficial for us to connect with them. And I appreciate the programs you're offering. I was happy to be a part of some of them. The latest is the, what do you call it, Wildwood. And that was just a wonderful example of something new that doesn't cost a lot, but boy, do the kids come. And so, that's so rewarding to just see kids squealing and running all over the hills and, and just all the things you do, from the zoo to the Discovery Center and the pools and the ball fields. I know that when you justified the turf at Annaberg, sometimes when we do something that's that big a deal, for me, I'd like to see some numbers from one, from the before and the after. And I was out there, you took me out on a tour after it, we had a, imagine that, we're in a drought. This was back when it was raining all the time and it was soggy. And you couldn't find, and there were all kinds of tournaments being canceled because of the rain. But it's still, sometimes it's good to just see how, what those numbers are, so that we can talk to some of the critics, because there are critics of everything. But it's good if we have a little bit of information that would be able to say how many soccer tournaments we offered or now that we had the turf. And we're going to do that again with the ball fields at CECO. So, after we get them turfed, whatever we're going to do, it would be good to just hear the before and after figures and that's not a big pressure on you.
Just a quick example, the Tuesday night here a few weeks ago, when we had some rain, as I went home and go by Annaberg, all four fields were being used. And at City Park, they were flooded. I mean, it's significant difference, an opportunity for people to be able to use, participate and still be out, as opposed to saying, no, don't, it's too muddy, you can't, it's not safe. It just gives people more of an opportunity.
I think with the cool weather we've had, everybody's ready, as with all of the blooms and the trees and the flowers, to just get outside and enjoy it. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Is there other business? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Give you a weathered update. So, there's been some alerts. So, Clay County, Northern Clay County has been in a tornado warning, including in the city of Clay Center for quite a while. They're still in a tornado warning. That's now been extended to Northern Riley County, including the city of Leonardville. Southern Clay County is in a severe thunderstorm warning. That cell had a tornado warning when it was west, just north of Salina. And it's moving straight east. So I anticipate that we'll get at least a severe thunderstorm warning probably within the next hour, maybe less.
So we have time to get home?
You do.
All right.
Perfect timing.
Yeah, that's probably true. And it's 9:30, so we're, we're keeping in, in line with our new ordinance, our new resolution, I remember. Thank you. We're adjourned.